I was extremely shy. I wouldn't give anyone a time of day. I wouldn't say boo. You know, this didn't happen till last week.
I feel like we're very zoomed in.
Yeah.
You can't even just see me.
Yeah, you can't even actually see Wayne there, too. Yeah. Who is that?
I don't know.
Who is it?
I know.
Who is it? Oh!
Yeah. I know, if somebody's not gonna have their pitch, their face or picture, we should make them push their pets down there.
Kids are required.
Yeah, very quiet. We want something fun to look at.
Jim, the mask tests are in the other room.
Yeah, I could see one more. Erica, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Alright, so I've got 6:15, so we'll call the meeting to order. Everyone should know the meeting is being recorded. Okay, so what we have here, minutes are first, so we're looking for a motion on the minutes, non-public and public for August 19th.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the minutes. Are you doing that for public and non, or one of the other? Vote, right. Motion and your second was vote. Alright, so the motion and a second to accept the public and non-public minutes of August 19, 2020. Any discussion, corrections? Anything? Alright, hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, minutes are all set. Alright, on to new board business. The first thing up is update on school reopening. Who is speaking to that? Joe and Anne?
So, I feel like things in the classroom have gone extremely well, very positive. Students have followed the guidelines very well, and they're responding well to the instruction, which is really focusing on the social-emotional piece right now. Logistically, the morning arrival and the afternoon departure have been, you know, things to learn from. But even in just one day, there's been a really good improvement. So, at first I was thinking they might need to make some adjustments to the plan, but I think learning about it will be alright. The only worry is whether and how that's gonna impact our ability to do this and at least keep everybody comfortable. Lunch is, we're working out the details of eating in the classroom and, you know, continually revising that. Really, it's been more, more around the logistics and the operations of those types of things that are a lot different than what we were used to and. We had, we did have to set, put two kids in isolation today for vomiting and. So, the parents have been given two options to have them get a COVID test and get the results back, or they have the 10 days to, one, maybe simply three. Kind of just summarizing that. It's a little bit more explicit in the note that parents will give them. I can get that from the nurse if the board would like it. Teachers are just going crazy, doing, doing all kinds of things. And our fifth grade class is going well. That's the one where we have two sets of, you know, classes going on. They're using teams effectively. We're working through some of the remote issues. And I think, you know, it's just, it's a learning curve because we hadn't actually done it this way. So, we're still working on trying to iron out the kinks in that system. But I think we're doing, we're doing, we're getting there. We're not going back. To make sure things.
So, at the middle high school, I have to first just talk about the students. I think they're doing a phenomenal job. We've had to do some reteaching about the correct way to wear a mask, as you wouldn't expect because kids are kids. So, there's been some of that issue, but I think the students so far have been wonderfully compliant. I haven't had any real discipline issues. I mean, the worst thing I've seen happen so far is somebody tried to drink their milk through their mask and of course it went all over their clothes. So, they have, somebody will have fun with their mask. I think the teachers right now are trying to do everything at once, which is humanly impossible, but that's what they're trying to do. They're really working hard. So, it's, you know, from the day that we started the advisory, we thought this was gonna be a wonderful way to roll out social-emotional learning, give the case, kids a home base, and I think it's working very well. I haven't, I haven't had kids complain. I haven't had teachers complain. And more importantly, I haven't seen a single cellphone out yet. Because that was the big issue in the morning. Kids would come in the cafeteria, 150 kids sitting there, and everybody had their phone out. It was really hard after you had it out then put it away. So, we're not seeing that as an issue. I, I have gotten a lot of questions from, concerns from parents, and we're just taking those phone calls and emails one person at a time and trying to identify what's, what can we do to make things better for them. So, it's a challenge for everybody, but I will say that it's been a pleasure to see the kids clean their space before they leave the room. Everybody just does it, and so school should stay really clean this year. So far, so good.
Does anybody have any questions for either principal?
I would like to see the note that Joe.
Yeah, I would like to see that, too. So, how has the, because it's totally different at the high school level than the elementary school. That's a great summary. I'm feeling good about how in-class has started. How is the remote kickoff gone?
There's been a lot of issues with technology. I think that's what, one of my concerns with parents. I think we, in retrospect, I do think we have to do a better job helping parents learn it because they're like me. They don't, they don't understand this. They're not digital natives. So, I think there, there has been a lot of issues with the changing of the password. People were confused about what is the Power School password for? Is that how I log into a computer? They didn't understand the difference. So, I think we resolved some of those questions. Some students forgot to log on to their laptop while they were within the wifi zone of the school and go home and couldn't log on, so they had to come back. Some students and parents think that, oh, I just, I log on once in the morning and I'm done for the day. I don't have to go to my classes. I think so our next Zoom meeting next Tuesday night with parents, we need to reiterate and emphasize how important it is for kids to really engage, have a safe learning environment at home, so that they're not in, you know, the whole family's not gathered around and everybody's pissing in. And then, they have to do the work. So, we haven't gotten to the point of doing the work yet, but I think once those assignments start, it'll be very telling.
Right, and there's, to be, the teachers are taking attendance for the remote learners. I mean, I think we all felt pretty strongly about that.
They are taking attendance.
Why did they change the password? I'm just asking. Seems like it adds a layer of confusion.
This, this year, the concept of marrying Power School to Office 365 came up. And in order to do that, so that your classes can load right into all 365 and load up your teams, it looked like a great idea, but one of those unintended consequences was that you had to change your password.
Right.
And at the time, I didn't know that, so.
Well, it doesn't sound like a big idea, too, but I can understand why everybody's trying to get adjusted.
Yep.
I know, my passwords stem off of one single. So, yeah, I was curious. I'm happy to sound going well in school and I was curious about how the remote kickoff went.
It's gonna be a long haul, I think. I think, you know, it is, you're really teaching the student and the parent. I think that that's, that's gonna engage everybody in the family. It's tough.
Anybody, Paulie?
Um, just the one thing I heard, and, and I don't know, we don't have chat, but I, just before I start. After the last meeting, I heard that I was like, they had trouble hearing me, so hopefully everybody can hear me. After the meeting, people were like, you sounded like you were underwater, so hope that doesn't happen tonight. Anyway, so the one thing I heard from, from a parent of a remote kid that was that, and I think they said definitely got better as the day went on. You know, but, and I know this is super hard because like right now, we have Anne monitoring the Zoom and Paul taking notes, and we expect our teachers to teach, monitor the kids at home, watch the chat, blah, 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 which is a lot. So, and some kids, the 20 parent that I talked to last night said, you know, my kid was typing in the chat and nobody was answering him, so. And that was like early, so I think it got better, but that's like, you know, he got frustrated by that.
We, yesterday, we had the first day of school faculty meeting, how did things go? And we broke up into groups. So, some people who have a higher level of expertise, and I think probably know some of those people, shared how to do this. And one of the things that came up was how can we control the chat? Because when we go into Teams, you have that option to say, me only, you know, I'm the one that controls the chat. Just so smart, they know how to get around it. So, I think it can be administratively driven into Teams that only the teacher can run the chat. And then we would recommend that the kids email their questions individually to the teacher so that they could answer at a later time. I think we're, we're learning how to do this while we do it. I hate to use that old cliche about flying a plane while in building it at the same time, but you know, it's almost like that still, although we've made big strides.
Yeah, I, I think there are one thing, when, at least with their first period classes, that they couldn't hear the teacher with the, you know, the mask and, you know, the whatever, so, and they were just a little frustrated, like, I can't hear what's going on, so.
Today, we did look at what would be the cost if we could get the little headsets and the microphone that the teacher could wear while they walk around? Is that something that we can afford to do? And if so, what would it look like? So, we're looking, we're looking, we're improving this model all the time. I tend to be really good at it.
We won't need it anymore. Great, thank you. And, oh, and Joe, I'm, I'm not, the only thing I really heard about middle high school is that one, one parent. But I had, I've been here a lot last night, but I had to hear from a couple of people that things went, you know, elementary-wise, that people were happy with, with how most of the stuff went.
Yeah, we have the same issue around sound, so I'm happy to hear that. We're looking into that.
And during the four days of preparation for this, a lot of teachers practiced. Like, I go in with, try to, we'd do meetings back and forth between my office, and some days it was graveling. You couldn't hear, and I said, what are we doing wrong? And so, we kind of fine-tuned it, and we did have a lot of help from my team for that, so.
Cool, thank you.
Kayla, anything?
I, I told you at the past week, my son, you know, it's only two days and he's done.
So.
Good.
Alright. Anything else for the principals? Alright, so moving on, milk price recommendation increased 10 cents. Who's speaking to that?
So, Tom will speak to the milk price increase request from Addy Group. You've probably heard milk prices are going up. So, he'll, he'll speak to that. It's, there's a number of issues relative to food service, and he'll talk to hundreds of support. But we need a board vote to approve the milk price increase.
So, what we're asking for is the Addy Group's vendors, sources have increased their prices, and they would like us to approve a price increase from 50 cents per milk to 60 cents per milk.
Does anyone have any questions for Tom?
I do. So, I think, I don't know if it's just elementary school or all kids under 18. The Free Meals Act, will this impact that at all? Are we gonna, it's gonna go from free to now everyone has to give 10 cents a day or something? Is there gonna be an impact?
Thanks for the question, Kayla. I'd like to address that later on, as Wayne said in my financial report.
If we could have a vote on it, then we should discuss it now.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask for a vote if the board has questions that aren't.
Or we could wait to vote and so then.
And that's, that's a possibility, too. So, what do we want to do? Do you want to have Tom bump up some of his financial report? Or do we want to move the milk price increase to his financial report?
I think it makes sense to move it to his report.
Alright, so we're gonna.
It sounds like there's a lot of pieces to it.
Yep. So, you guys okay with that? Alright, so we're gonna, Tom, if that's alright with you, we're gonna move that and handle that with your financial report, okay?
Absolutely, as the board wishes. So, you have heard from various sources, the conversation outside, about the change in the food service programs. And I apologize that we weren't able to get you that information, but let me give you the timeline of what came in to me. On September the 8th, we were notified from the department that we needed to extend the 1920, 21, 1920, 2019, 2020, summer food service application ending date to December 31st of 2020. And that the USDA had announced waivers with that program and an extension of that program through to December 31st. So, that was done. I had to speak with folks in Concord to get that date changed on our application from last year's food service program. And I saw then on the 8th, which was yesterday, right, that that was taken care of. The, the department sent out a lengthy question and answer guidance document related to this because they're struggling, as well as us, with getting piecemeal guidance from USDA. So, what they have provided us is that now all school sites are allowed to become area-eligible under the new area eligibility waiver. What's that mean in plain English? That means that schools that don't have a high enough free and reduced population and are not in an area designated by USDA as, as financially needy, which Hinsdale is not, curiously enough, that we no longer have to meet the, the percentage free and reduced threshold in order to, in order to have the authorities that the waiver grants. So, now, schools can begin serving free meals to all students. Families and students can now be informed that all meals will be served free until December 31st, 2020, or until the funds run out, whichever comes first. So, that means the USDA gives a block of money to the state of New Hampshire. I don't know what that block is or how the state accounts for it. I've seen it happen in various programs in the past where all of a sudden we get an announcement that as of this date, you will no longer be able to do this. So, I, I can't even predict whether the free meal funds will last through December 31st or will end sometime short of that. School sites are now allowed to serve meals free to all children 18 and under. All students, both remote learners and in-school, school learners may be served free meals. The FFVP, that's Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, might also be used in these same ways. The SAU does need to request approval for certain waivers for meal pattern deviation, weekend meal service, and parent guardian meal pickup. So, you know, there's a lot of details here, and I won't drag this out a long time, but there's this lengthy Q and A, and we received it on the 8th. So, we're bringing it to the school board's attention at the first available moment to say that, yes, this can be done. There was a subsequent mailing from the department. Let's see, when did I receive that one? Forgive me for a moment. Let me just look for it. It was also on the afternoon of the 8th. And this was in response to many questions from school districts back to the department. And they say, we have some parents who would like to pay for their child's meal. Is this okay? And the department answer is, yes, it's allowable. Do all schools under the National School Lunch Program or organizations under the Child and Adult Food Program have to offer free meals to all children? The answer is no, not all do. The SAU can decide. Are all school sites allowed to become area-eligible under the waiver, even if they did not serve meals last spring? Yes, all sites that offer NSLP may be considered area-eligible. Additional information received. Let's see, how, it says, all sites that serve may be considered area, area-eligible under the new extended waiver. However, there must be a clear need for free meals established within the school community. We are required to collect this documentation of need and will be reaching out in the near future for it. USDA is again requiring us to target free and reduced populations. So, I have questions about that. You may, too, and I'm not sure that I can answer any questions at this point in time because I haven't seen the near future reach out for a collection of documentation of need. I would say this. We have, we know that the elementary school free and reduced numbers are high enough to qualify even without the area eligibility waiver. And I believe that since we had been approved in the last spring to operate the program the way that we did and not charge, that we would still be able to do so. And I think that the documentation that we had previously provided will still be adequate, but I can't promise that the department will not be asking me for more information. The, there's some more Q and As about free meals and need, clear need established. How is it defined? You know, I just have to laugh about some of these Q and As because it, it's example of how difficult these targets, the, these changes in the rules are on everybody, even at the department. Their answer is, in, in regards to how is clear need defined? Currently, unemployment is still high and is at 8.1% statewide, according to New Hampshire Employment Service. In addition, some people were laid off or let go or, and found jobs that were lower paying. So, there's a high level of underemployment in the state. Also, there are families where parents just went back to work and who need time to get back on their feet financially. These are all reasons why there would be a clear need in the school community to serve free meals. So, that's pretty wishy-washy to me, but I think we can probably consider ourselves eligible for doing it. Does, final question and answer, does the school or SAU have to revert to SSO, which we are not, that's a streamlined summer program that can be done under the, the NSLP, or SFSP, which we are, and which the department took time to figure out that, oh, we're SFSP and we're not National School Lunch Program extension. So, we have a different track and different requirements, which is why they had to get us to go in and modify the dates in the SFSP program to get in on this. So, that's what I know at this point about where we stand, and we're bringing it to the board for your attention so that you can make a decision. Do we want to serve free meals, which would be breakfast, lunch, after-school snack? Which the after-school snack has always been free under the ASP program. But do we want to provide those without cost to all children in the district up through December 31st or when the funds run out, whichever comes first? And before you make that decision, I, I also want to address the communication of this because I know how things swirl around. I think it's very important to point out that none of this changes our responsibility for operating the free and reduced application and determination process and what the, what's known as the verification, where we have to take extra steps to send information out to a sample of the applications that we've received and get confirmation from the families that they are still income-eligible for free and reduced. The department has pointed out in the end of the, the first Q and A that for the integrity of the program, we still need to be doing those things. Furthermore, what the, what the Bureau of Nutrition doesn't point out, but which I think is even more critical to our district finances, is that a drop in the free and reduced numbers could have a catastrophic effect on other state revenue programs, including the adequacy money for free and reduced. So, even though this sounds like a great thing on the surface, oh, great, we can serve the meals and not charge the families. The messaging of it is very important so as not to disturb the other state revenue streams. We don't want families to just think, oh my, since the meals are free, I don't have to fill out this income eligibility application form for free and reduced. Why should I bother doing that paperwork if I'm already getting the free meals? And the timing of that's critical because the, that information that goes. That information that goes into the state. About our free and reduced levels is generated in October. And then again, later on in the year updated. So it's very important that we do the normal free and reduce process upfront. Erica's working on it, she's gotten about 50 applications from families at this point. She is concerned when the word gets out there that families are just going to ignore that. And we have to make sure that that does not happen. Kayla, I lost your audio at the end of that.
So my question is about staffing for meals going to kids who aren't in school. Are we gonna be able to complete?
So I don't really know all the regulations, Tom, but I would assume that.
Joe, you broke up there on me a little bit, I think you were saying about the regulations. This program would operate just as we did last spring. And we made the decision to have a remote pickup site, but that was not necessary. And we did have at the middle high school pickup there. And we could continue with that model at, at both the schools if that works for folks.
Either way, it's then December 31st and it could end sooner, so. And if it ends suddenly and you already have the application.
I see folks looking over my way, but I had. I had no audio on that, so I, I don't know the, what the, could you repeat the question, please? I'm sorry, Jim, it's, it's really still breaking up. I don't know if this is an internet problem, I, or a room microphone problem. All my audio is choppy, I'm hearing.
But just because we're offering free to everybody doesn't mean that the parents who normally fill it out no longer have that responsibility. Well, of course they can hear me. So yeah, so I think to Kayla's point though, as long as we emphasize, and maybe that's something that could go out in an email. A mass email just saying, I think how we present the free lunch, as Tom said, is critical. And I think that we really need to. Make sure that it's presented well and make parents understand that if they want to continue to have the benefits of this program. They need to fill out the forms as normal. I wonder if it's the paper cloth instead of cloth masks. Or I'm just loud.
I, I thought I was being pretty loud.
Tom, Anne typed Jim's question to the chat. Did anyone else have any questions?
Well, I have one, and can you hear me? At least I'll test if you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm like on top of the microphone, so maybe that's why, but just to, you definitely, you said breakfast is included, right? Breakfast and lunch and after school snack, okay. The teachers will like that, because I heard the breakfast tracking process has been a little confusing. Like the next day, they have to, yes, you did eat it and da, 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 so that's good if they won't have to do that, maybe.
And, and just to be clear, these are only the student meals that are eligible for reimbursement.
Any other questions? If there's a question, ask it.
What does he mean? What, what did you mean by that?
Staff meals are not free.
Oh, yeah, no, we're talking, I was just saying when they have to track the kid the next day, did they really get their breakfast? The day before, because they have to track that for whether or not they pay for it. So that was the only thing, because I've, I've heard from a few people that that was a little confusing.
Right, we, we're still under the obligation to. Do account of the meals to, by folks that know what constitutes a reimbursable meal. And so that we can, at the end of the month, claim in bulk for the number of meals provided.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't, yeah, and I didn't mean staff would get, of course they're gonna pay.
A la carte sales are not an eligible reimbursable meal. Never have been, never will be. And at this stage, we have not started a la carte sales, but I think everyone's. Looking forward to getting that going as soon as possible as well. So there will still be monies collected. For a variety of reasons, and we'll still have to account for submitting a claim with meal counts. And keeping the documentation that's required under the program to, to be able to be audited. For, by the department sometime in the future.
All right, Tom, what do you need from us today?
So I, I think I'm just asking for your. Decision on the increase of the a la carte milk price. Which may not go into effect immediately, as far as sales of a la carte milk go. And also your thoughts on whether we should continue to pursue. Free meal service for an indefinite period of time, not to exceed December 31st at this stage.
Do you need, do you need the decision or the, our thoughts on pursuing the free meal service? Do you need that in the form of a motion?
I think that would be good, yes, thank you.
I, I just have a question, when you refer to the milk just now as a la carte, so does that mean? So milk is not included with the meal? Like, are drinks always a la carte? I, I don't know, because I don't obviously eat in the cafeteria, so.
No, I think. Joe, you might answer for the elementary school, you know how they operate the program over there. Each kid gets a milk with the meal, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's a component of the reimbursable meal. But then there's also additional a la carte milk sales that wouldn't, the, the price increase would not affect. And take effect until after a la carte milk sales began.
So my question then, so are we raising the lunch price by 10 cents or just the a la carte milk by 10 cents?
Just the a la carte milk, not the lunch price, no change in lunch prices this year.
Other questions?
Other than the lunch price goes to zero if that's the board, board's decision.
Any other questions?
I make the motion that we explore the option of, or participate in the free lunch program for all students. Until December 31st or Monday runs out, and that we accept a 10% price increase for all a cart.
So let's do the motion separately. But it's, but it's 10 cents, not 10%. And you said, explore and pursue, so let's clarify, let's do them separately and clarify. So do you want to explore, which means Tom needs to wait, or are we?
Well, no, but I've heard Tom just say that he still had a lot of exploring to do because the notification comes out. I think we should participate in the free lunch program.
Right, I just think, I just wanted to make sure we're using correctly.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
Mister Chairman, it's, it's actually an approved deal at this point in time. Though there may be some straggling things that I have to pursue about. Documentation of need, as I talked about earlier, so I, I'm not sure that there's not something that. I'm gonna have to provide for documentation to the department, but. The, the program of free meals is approved effective yesterday, the eighth.
So then it's to participate. Is that the motion? So we have a motion to participate in the free meal service. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? You have a motion? We have a second, ready for the discussion on that. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mister Chairman, I just have a question about communication of this to our community.
As do I, yes, go ahead.
Well, that's the question, how would you like it to be communicated? Is that something the school board wants to handle under their policy, since it goes out to everyone? And, and I'm happy to provide any information that you'd like in terms of. Looking at the messaging that, that's crafted and making sure. That we're not gonna create a problem on the free and reduced issue.
All right, so I think because it is kind of a new and temporary policy the board is approving. I think the board should generate message on that, unless anyone disagrees. So the process would be, Julia, if you can work with Tom, get the right information and put it all together. Then we would be, you know, send it to me, I'll give it to Jim with approving, it'll come back. And then we'll all get it out, I'll make sure Wayne has a copy and we'll get it out in matters that we need to get it out in.
I think for this, especially to emphasize the importance of skill meeting that.
Yep, we can do it as an all call, an email, as well as, you know, social media posts. The first step. Generate and then get approved and then it'll come to us and we can disseminate and determine the priority. And, you know, communication priorities as far as what, how it goes out. So we'll determine the priority, it'll fit into that mode of dissemination. That makes sense to everybody? Tom, you good with that?
Absolutely.
Wayne, are you good with that? All right, are we ready to move on to finance committee? Yes, all right, so finance committee and Wayne, that's you.
So this is an item that we discussed a couple of months ago in passing. And if we were to implement a, or establish a finance committee. Then this would be the time to do it, so just to give you a little background in regards to justification. To choose to add something else to our plate. The board creates goals, we created goals in June. The goals drive much of the budget conversation, because in order to fulfill the direction. That is usually established in the goals, sometimes there's financial implications. I've asked those who looked at the action planning for those goals, which we did today. We'll be doing it every other Wednesday for a while. To determine if there are potential financial impact in regards to developing these goals. And we have that conversation in October and we can flesh that out in November. So the issue around sort of the budget development, given that budget is kind of the expression, the manifestation of your will. As the board. The way, one way to do it is the, is a finance committee. As you know, I was administrator in Keene for about 25 years and. They had a process there that we might wanna consider. The process was in early October, the finance committee said. Here's a, a target, you know, we are elective officials, we kind of know what the, the new, any new development. We kind of sense where the tax rate might go, we know kind of will of the voters. And rather than have to create a number of programs that we just can't afford. Is, will not happen, and therefore there'll be, you know, the whole, you know, why can't we do that? And then all of a sudden, there's, there's issues relative to frustration around desire, which we don't want. So they've established a number and say, okay, let's say two and a half percent or zero percent, or whatever it is that they have for the given year. The administrators would then work within that number to, everybody's, every cost center manager would compete with others. Say, well, this is more important, that's more important, here's the goals of the district, let's try to line this all up. So it was just a way to establish clarity around budgeting process. So if you were to have a finance committee, you would typically have 40% of your board, two members. And in your case, you might want a budget committee member, so you'd have three people. It would be an opportunity for cost center managers to answer questions in a little less public venue that would. Mandate all of the board. By the time the budget went to the budget committee, the members of the. Finance committee, including one budget committee member, would be able to articulate. The requests and the desire of that group, which always, you know, there's much more credibility around the elected official communicating something. Someone who lives in town than someone who's come in and said, that's what I think. So it just establishes a little less angst in the process, a little more trust. And eventually, hopefully, a better budget that lines up with your class. This may not be the year to do it because you've got so much on your plate. Having said that, the revenue side is very unpredictable this year, everybody's heard. Bitching around room to meal stacks, issues around business profit stacks, and then on the cut, everyone's heard, well, just a minute, the government can save more money. And I do believe that the government is planning to print more money. And I do believe that the government is planning to print more money. And I do believe schools will be a recipient of some of that more, uh, more money. But it's still on the fence as far as towns, municipal government and state government. So they would be, the budget, their finance committee would be part of this whole conversation. And we can be at a sudden meeting of a board in, you know, third week in October because we found out we have more money or less money. I mean, this is going to be a tough year. So that's one reason to do it. The one reason not to do it is everybody is absolutely right up to here with unanticipated work. Uh, and that's going to continue to go, uh, at least for foreseeable future. So I'm just throwing it out. It's up to the board to decide if they want to go down that path. I do have a lot of experience with that way of developing a budget. Uh, and I do think the success rate would likely be a little higher if we were able to establish that. But it's additional work for an already taxed board.
Right, so a couple of months ago, I had floated, um, a version of this idea out to everybody as far as including also a member of the select board, um, just to kind of compare. Town and school, if everyone on the same page, know what the challenges are, know that hey, if the town is facing, uh, you know, this hardship, you know, maybe it's not the right year for us to do something or vice versa. So the select board was all in favor of doing something like this with us. I will tell you that I presented it kind of unofficially to the budget committee and they turned us down flat.
Yep.
Um, they have no interest in any kind of deeper understanding or communication with us than they already have. Um, so it would not include a budget committee member. So it would not include a budget committee member. Um, so as of this moment in time, um, it would be internal to us. And that's not to say that, you know, we couldn't pull someone in later. But if we were to do this, it would not include them.
Yeah, I just want to say, I was, I was the rep at that meeting, Sean, Sean came up soon and that presented that. And I, my percent, my take on the budget committee's response to it, um, was, was more that they didn't want any one budget committee member speaking for them or being involved with stuff they didn't know about. They had a very suspicious view of the whole thing. Um, I, I don't know if I would say that they didn't want a deeper understanding. I think maybe one or maybe two of them.
That was pretty much what was presented.
Yeah.
That was given back.
Yeah, I, I just, I took them more as they didn't want any one person speaking for, like they didn't, I don't think they trusted any of their own members to speak. You know, they were like, it's all of us or it's none of us is what one of the comments was. So, and I was like, well, it's not gonna be all, all of you. So, yeah, they were, they were pretty, pretty antagonistic about it. They just thought we were way off base for bringing it up. Yeah.
Yep, they did not see the value. So, um, I'm personally all in favor of us doing it. You know, um, whether, like Wayne said, whether that be this year or another year. That's, I guess, up to all of you. You know, I, I kind of put myself in that list of people that Wayne said has a lot of stuff to do.
How many board members did he say?
Two?
Two, okay.
Yeah. Um, so again, I'm all in favor of doing it. I think that it is a good way to, um, a very good way, very responsible way of kind of getting boards feel of a budget out there before all these plans are made by administration. And then they get all frustrated, they can't do things and that, you know, I, I see a lot of benefits to this. So Julia?
I would just suggest that although it is an incredibly challenging time, we've had a lot more meetings and everybody's busy, work related, school related, um, but if there was ever a year that the community needed to feel as though the board was very well informed and, uh, very cognizant and involved in the budgeting process and explaining where am I going? I would say this is the most critical to do that. And I would suggest that, that we need to.
And I think a big part of that is the revenue piece that Wayne was talking about because that is, is really such a guess, you know, right now as far as what's happening with that.
And there wouldn't be the emergency, oh my God, we gotta meet the whole board tomorrow. You know, I, I just feel like being informed and involved, although we're already doing a lot, which is great. I think, uh, I think it's kind of that, that we was not prepared.
Well, and I think that, you know, like I was, like I was saying at first, you know, um, avoiding frustration with the administration. I mean, the other thing with that too is, well, they're outstriking. So why have them put a whole lot of work into something? Do you know what I mean? That would be contrary to what we're looking for. So it's really respectful there.
Absolutely, I would agree with it.
Polly?
Um, I would say Kayla and I are the budget reps, so I would think it would be, we would be the two logical choices.
And?
Yeah.
All right, so I guess the first step is, do you guys want to do this?
Yeah. I just think it's the budget reps because we're, you know, the ones with them, but that's okay. I don't have to do it.
Um, all right, let's take this one, just take one, one step at a time. Do you have a more favorable, um, my initial thought was. You guys all want to do that? So, my thought is that the primary budget management. So, uh, now as far as having both budget reps on there, I can see where that can start to come from. My thought would be, if Polly's willing to have her be on this, you know, now as far as plus my speech, um, I know you have a lot more, you know.
Oh, understood. I guess you guys all have to.
So, and you noticed that from what I'm not talking into?
I, you guys just, I must've been in the new one last month as well, this is the second.
So, so. Okay, so would you like to take that? Is everybody okay with Polly and Julia? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, then we will be doing the finance committee and it will be Polly and Julia. Um, is there any other discussion on the finance committee? Wayne, are you good with all that?
I'm good.
Just?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, I, I can't meet until after five o'clock.
So what I have, you know, we can bring this up right now, but immediately, uh, Monday. Contact Tom, he's pretty available, uh, and I'll try to schedule something where we can get started at the convenience of the finance committee. And we'll notice, the board knows what's happening if it comes out.
Okay. All right.
Just because you mentioned the people, the other people that will be involved with the finance committee meetings and stuff. Are they good, are they fat administrators?
So, the, the committee, the finance committee will determine additional support. Tom and I, obviously, my, my hope was that as cost center managers, when it was appropriate, when we were looking at a
Yes.
uh, and they were ready, which they're obviously not yet, uh, then we would, at that time, uh, we'd bring those in. So there will be a lot of juggling around.
Anything else? Thank you, Wayne. All right, let's move on to this one's mind. Let's move on to review of the communications plan update. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a little bit of a breakdown on this. So because it's all new, I kind of wanted to take, you know, use that as an opportunity. Kind of do a little update, make sure everyone understands where we're at. And I kind of laid out, uh, the intent of the plan, um, the clarification of the roles. And I gave an example of, you know, where it worked well and where it broke down. Um, and we kind of just gave, you know, we're talking about communication for the lunch program. And we kind of gave an update on, uh, you know, how it, how it works. We had, um, I kind of used the flow of when, you know, it worked for us in the past. Um, you know, Julia generally will, you know, generate the copy, um, goes to Jim for proofing. And it comes back here, you know, to myself for dissemination. And that could be either, you know, me or Kayla, um, and then Polly is the backup, you know, because dissemination is kind of an important piece, but it's all important, but, you know, we need to be, Polly put it out. And, you know, we will classify the message into the priorities given in the communication plan. And then those priorities determine how the message goes out. Right? So where it didn't work for us a couple of weeks ago was when, um, that middle part of that chain kind of got, um, I, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but, um, um, while it was being proofed, then it was posted. And it, it kind of jumped a little bit. So we just want to make sure that we're following, you know, the plan that's laid out. We kind of want to stay with our roles. And we need to understand there are two distinct tracks on this. There are tracks where the board is generating messages and then goes up that chain. And there's going to be, um, obviously many, many instances where, um, the district is generating messages too. Um, and that goes up, you know, their predetermined track. The, um, staff members to principals, principals to superintendent, whoever is superintendent, you know, or his designated, which is generally the communications officer, uh, would then put information out there. So we've had recently examples of where, uh, the board side of it is broken down and causing some confusion. And we've also seen where, um, the district side of it is broken down and causing some confusion. So because it's all new, um, I wanted to put this out there and I'll, you know, definitely field question if anybody has any. You know, but we just want to make sure that we, uh, that we stay in our lanes. Um, I gave examples, with an example that didn't work well as far as what the impact was, what the, basically fallout from it was. So that we can see that when we don't, when we don't do it right, when we steer out of our lanes, um, it's going to cause problems for all concerned, you know? And the thing we want to do the least is interfere with the operations of the district. The district needs to operate efficiently. Um, it, it needs to operate, period. Um, and we can very easily get in the way of that unintentionally. You know, so, you know, some of the basic things that, um, you know, okay, I need to, I need to reschedule this, uh, this sporting event. I need to call, I need to call this meeting, call that meeting. That has nothing to do with us. That is all district side. They have their processes in place for that. Um, obviously everything rolls uphill. So, I mean, Wayne can turn around at any point in time and say, no, you're not doing that. But generally he has, um, entrusted, you know, his staff to do whatever. So that, we don't touch any of that. The messages that we generate, and again, we just had a really good example of that. And we emphasized that we really need to make sure we get that feedback right now. So that's something that we can do and they can support us, the same way that our messaging can support them, you know? So we can support each other without getting in the way of each other. We just need to be really careful. Very, very, very easy to get in the way of each other, you know, as we've seen over the last couple of weeks. And the last thing that we want to do is really, you know, we still want to pull back from that micromanaging thing. We don't want to micromanage. When it comes to communication, I will say, and Polly will agree, it is probably the only time NHSBA will say, no, that you need to come down from that 30,000 foot view for communication right now. But other than that, we, we, we want to make sure we're not micromanaging. And the misunderstanding that happened a couple of weeks ago led to unprecedented view of micromanaging. And it was like, wait, why am I getting all of this stuff that I don't want to see or be any part of? So, so we just need to be careful. Right? Does anybody have any questions on this at all? Does that can answer? I tried to be as thorough as I could. Okay, Polly?
I just want to make a comment that, that you said about the school board association and 30,000 foot view. And in talking to Barrett about something else, um, last week, he actually did say that because of everything going on with, with the craziness of COVID and back to school and stuff, that this is, it actually is the one time that they will say the school board needs to really know and have a process and when it comes to communication and know what's going on in general and, you know, kind of the overarching, like what's in the plan. But also especially if something goes out in the board's name, the board needs to vet it and know about it. But, and so he, he actually came right out and said that with communication.
And I think that we've got a good plan that we've put together, um, you know, and, and it's new. So there's obviously, we're dealing with all this new stuff, right? All this new stuff that we're expecting bumps in the road and we're seeing bumps in the road. And this is another new thing that we're having bumps in the road, but as we find and we can iron them out and we can, you know, move forward if we start. And all that, and I'll ask, you know, if the principals, if you guys have any questions on this because we don't want to be in your way.
I have a comment. You're all learning new things. We're all going to make mistakes. But the video that you folks made was astronomical. I mean, that's communication at its best. Thank you. That worked and I think it was a good example of what you guys can do, have time to tell. Thank you.
Joe, do you have any questions or anything? We're here to support, you know, elementary school as well, but not just Anne's building.
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree. Our video that you did for us, for these for us was also tremendous. I wish I could do it. It just, it just feels a little hard, uh, at sometimes, like, exactly knowing, like, for instance, the thing about the nurse. Um, you know, that's, that's material taken right from the, uh, from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services and, uh, the CDC guidelines and our reopening plan. And it's worded in a way that provides parents with two options to decide. So, you know, the question becomes, is this something, you know, it, it's just not as clear to me as what, what fits and what doesn't.
So, so that's actually a really, really, really good example because in that case, Health and Human Services, and, and correct me if I misspeak along the way, because they actually talked about that a little bit, um, in the webinar for communications and stuff with the NHSBA. So with Health and Human Services and stuff, I think what the board wanted at that point was to kind of, you know, see what you have. It is not, in this case, it would not be in our place to do anything with that unless you guys specifically ask us to help get specific information out. Because Health and Human Services is really mandating a very strict method of reporting, um, a very strict method of, uh, communicating. And they're kind of overriding all of us on that, you know? That's my understanding anyway. So with that stuff, you know, the board may want to see a copy of something just so they know what's there. But we should not get in the way of any kind of procedures or anything that Health and Human Services has set up. That is not in our wheelhouse to get in the way of. And that gets into that senior old lane. Um, and when I pulled materials for the communication plan from the webinar, Health and Human Services was one thing they called out as far as do not get in the way of that. So what the school has, the district has set up with Health and Human Services, we need to stay clear of that. Okay, that's very important. So there may be other district messaging and, you know, this whole, um, meals thing is, is a really good example of that, that we can generate that message. Um, and I would say that if there's a question, you know, is this like a district thing or a board thing? You know, ask, you know, ask Wayne and Wayne and I can talk about it. Um, but that, I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that I want to emphasize to everybody on this side. We do not get in the way of that. Okay, that's very important. Does that kind of answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, it is something that we had to address immediately today.
Absolutely.
To go through a long step of.
No. Nope, absolutely. And that's, and then that's why, another reason why that is a really good example. It's some stuff you're going to need to make sure that you do right away. And if there's any kind of instances of illness and stuff like that, you have your protocol, correct me if I'm wrong. You have your protocols all spelled out. You need to be able to do that. We, we cannot get in the way of that. Okay? And I, I just really need to reemphasize that we cannot get in the way of that. Okay? So thank you, Julie, for bringing that up. All right, any other questions? All right, um, so the review of the code of conduct. Um, I asked Anne to put this in there, um, because, you know, our attorney at one point had suggested that, um, with some of the questions we've had on remote learning and privacy and stuff like that, that we review the code of conduct. and add in a section on remote learning to address some of those concerns. So I know we don't have anything in there tonight. I wanted to know how you guys wanted to proceed with that. Joe?
So I wanted to go back because, um, you may recall last court meeting, I mentioned that we were having zero tolerance for, um, the behaviors that had, uh,
Yep.
fluid, bodily fluids.
Yep.
And Patty, uh, special ed director had been on the webinar and where it was clearly stated that that inclusion, we could recommend going remote, but that I would not be able to say to them that, uh, this student has to go remote because these, or she is, hasn't bodily fluids, uh, on the case of healthy others. So we'd have to kind of go back on that statement.
Okay.
And that, um, you'll have to consider it and we could recommend it, but we couldn't force that they would do it.
Okay.
And that goes to those bodily contact as well.
Gotcha, okay. Holly?
Kind of fits in the code of conduct because.
It does, absolutely, yes.
It's a behavior that's concerning all the time, but especially.
Holly, do you know if NHSBA has any kind of, um, sample addendums to the code of conduct for this situation?
Yeah, I don't, but I could ask, I could look that up.
That might be a good place for us to start because we'll need to figure that out. Uh, Kayla?
Thinking about the other policies we have, they do kind of touch on this. And the special ed thing is always, that's tricky. We have excluding, there are a certain number of, I'm wondering if we can figure something out because there are a certain number of days and they're not being excluded. I just wonder if we could, if Patty could dig into that a little bit more maybe, or somebody? Because I have a feeling if we're putting our staff at risk and they still, they would still need to receive all services. But I'm definitely wondering if, if we have an instance where someone is really, you know, they, or whatever the case may be, and our staff is really not safe, then I think we need to make sure we can do something about it.
Um, so can we, for tonight anyway, can we, um, say that Holly will look for guidance from NHSBA? And can we ask, um, Wayne maybe to look into, um, kind of what you're talking about? Looking to some of the other things that we can and can't do as far as a code of conduct around remote learning?
And I mean, I can look into it.
Okay, and that's fine. I mean.
And I just wanted to add just so, um, one of the things I know that Matt Upton had said, um, in, in with the code of conduct, he said, we, you know, we might be able to address this with the code of conduct is when, one of the concerns when we were talking about remote learning and, uh, video conferencing, live streaming, um, is, you know, you don't know who's watching at home. And, you know, it had been happening in the spring of those other districts around the country where like somebody's off camera, sitting on the couch next to the kid, videoing the teacher, and then they manipulate the video and put it out and do nefarious things. So his, one of his suggestions with those types of things was that write it into the code of conduct. I mean, once it's out, it's, you know, the barn door is open, but at least you could, you know, deal with it with, with the code of conduct issue though. So I'll, I'll dig into that and see what else Barrett might have and stuff.
Okay. All right, cool. So that we can hear back from people at the next meeting. Will that work? Wayne, are you good with that? Was there, did anyone have any questions or anything else on the review of the code of conduct? Kayla?
I had just never noticed that throwing snowballs is considered an offense that can be successful.
So.
So it's only if it causes injury. Okay.
Yeah. Cause, because, because here's the thing, while it's, while it sounds silly, have you ever been hit with an ice ball?
Well, and, yeah, but.
I have many times, believe it or not. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's been cases when I was at the middle school where if they were playing football and they fired a football, I had a kid and it would have felt that hurt.
Yeah. It's, it, yeah, it's, so, so, so that one I'll stand with the code of conduct on. All right, anything else? All right, um, let's do the final reading of policies.
All of those.
DGPA, no, GGA, CKA, EBBC dash JLCD, ECG. One time I'm going to read them. So this is the final reading. I need a motion to accept those policies as a final reading.
A second.
Like a motion and a second to accept those as a final reading. Now discussions, because there was discussion last month, a couple of weeks ago, whatever it was.
Is that one I included in the?
That was DGA, wasn't it? Well, no, that DGA is, um, authorized signatures. Yeah.
No, um, now there's the two policies in there. Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. I am feeling better about that.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have any discussion? All right, so all those in favor of accepting those, uh, those policies as a final reading, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have the first reading of policies JLCG, EHAC, GBGA, GBAA, IHAM. So I'm looking for a motion to accept those policies as a first reading. Motion and a second. Any discussion on those policies? Nothing? Right, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting those policies as a first reading, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, any other business to be conducted by the board? Does anybody, yes?
Oh, from Catherine?
Oh, yes. We have a letter. She has a letter from the community development coordinator. I believe it was regarding outdoor hen sale. They don't have a chance to look at that. So again, it's the request for the use of the school van, um, for outdoor hen sale on the 20th, to basically bring people back after the hike. Um, she's saying they will have mandatory masks. She's going to disinfect the van. Yep.
A school employee.
For the insurance. So. What do you guys want to do? Right, motion and a second to authorize Catherine the use of one of the school vans for outdoor hen sale. Actually, either one or both, um, for outdoor hen sale on the 20th, I think it's. Any discussion? I can't remember what you said, I think you just want. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Did anybody else have anything on their other business?
I have.
Okay.
You can, you can.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, two things. One is, I know we talked about both grade graduations at the end of, uh, last year, but I also recommend the fifth graders and all those people who worked on that.
I see how it is now. Um, so I don't know if, if, if either if, um, Wayne or any of the principals are addressing this, then I'll, I'll defer. But we had talked about at several meetings and then last month especially, um, a trigger number. So if there's a number of cases in the community, um, people have been asking about this. I brought it up the day we had our vote, um, about SAU 29's number. So I have some information because the state came out with some guidance. Um, and as I saw today, SAU 29 amended theirs. There was, used to be 10 cases for 100,000 in the last, 700,000 residents in the last 14 days. And now they're going with the state, which is different. And I have paper, um, copies of all that if you want me to pass it out. I mean, unless you guys are planning to address it in your own reports, then I won't.
So, so far, this is what we've done. We may want to preempt, uh, our discussion. We reviewed the barrel of infections and disease control criteria around minimal, moderate, and substantial level of community transmission. You may have seen this document. So we reviewed that today, uh, and we decided to, at our, at our meeting on the 23rd, to come up with the recommendation once and have the nurses actually at the meeting with the administrators to give us their guidance. But we're happy to have any other, if the board would like to come up with something sooner and, you know, it's your call ultimately. You know, we're happy to do that. Their basic, uh, they use positivity as a seven day average or number of new infections per 100,000 population or number of new hospitalizations. So there's, criteria is pretty well spelled out, but where you fall on it and where you, when you want to decide or if you want to decide, uh, given future circumstances, that will be your call. We certainly want to get in the way of that.
Okay, so I can pass, um, I have made copies for the board and the principal and Wayne. So, um, for you two, and then, and what I made a copy of was what, the guidelines from the state that Wayne was just holding up. Then I went in today, uh, to the website that the state directs you to, to look at it. Um, every day they update it, the metrics. So I looked at Cheshire County and it tells you how many cases we have per 100,000 residents over the last 14 days. And, and they go through the whole thing, like with, they're looking at cases over the past, um, it's interesting because when you look at their form here, their grid, it says, um, seven day, oh, I'm sorry. That is right, seven day positivity rate, but the other ones are cases over the last 14 days. So I went in then to their, uh, website and pulled up Cheshire and just printed that off. So as of today, we're at, in the minimal zone. So we're 23.5 ca, new cases over the last 14 days. And, and, and it, I mean, I think it's good if we take a look at it and think about it and kind of absorb it and then come back at the next meeting after you guys have looked at it. Because it is like, it takes into, it's like a, the, the grid like kind of cross references itself that you, they look at the level of community transmission and then the level of what the school impact is. And then they kind of have a grid with where they kind of meet up and their recommendations. So there is a lot more cases, it's more number of cases than what Keen was originally using. Um, they were going to do like, if it hit 10 cases out of 100,000 residents in a rolling 14 day average, they would go to remote now. The state is recommending if it hits 50 to 100 is you go hybrid. Now, we don't have a hybrid plan. So we'll have to decide if we go with the states, we'll have to modify it because we can't go to a hybrid plan because we were not given any true hybrid recommendations. But if you have 100 cases, you go all remote. So it was a big jump where Keen was going to use 10 to 100.
Yeah.
So, um, and it does say, if you read it, and like I said, I think it would be good if we like digest it because there's a lot of information. Yeah, definitely. But, um, so I printed off, like I said, as of today. And if you follow, um, the links, um, this is, there's a Sentinel article, which I printed off. So that will help you with the links. But, uh, there is a website that actually it has a school pod mall on the state's COVID website where you just click school and it's, it kind of gives you the information to judge all this on where, a snapshot of where each county is right now. So.
That's updated daily.
Yep, I don't know when during the day, but yeah, it's supposedly daily. Four o'clock, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So, uh, so can we, can we have that on to the agenda for next block? All right, thank you. Does anybody? Thank you, Holly, for putting that all together.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Does anybody else have anything? All right, let's move on to the reports. So we have a financial report. Tom, was there anything left?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one additional item to bring to your attention just for informational purposes. There is a program that's been, uh, rolled out called USDA Farmers to Families. And what it is, is an attempt by the USDA to provide boxes of meals for needy households. It's been, it's working through the surplus distribution organization in Concord. And I believe they have a contract with the Abbey Group as well to provide, uh, all school districts in the, in the state who are interested, boxes of fresh produce. Uh, up to 25 pounds are available and fluid milk for one gallon, uh, containers per box. And, uh, so I bring it to your attention because it's not really in the school districts, uh, area of identifying needy households. But it might be information you would consider passing along to the town welfare office. There is however, a deadline for this, uh, of September 18th.
Tom, can you get me, uh, that information because I can get that to Darlene?
I will forward you the email right now.
All right, cool. I can definitely get that to her ASAP.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions of my lengthy report. Thank you for having taken care of all the action items I had requested.
Anyone have questions for Tom? No? Nothing? Okay, Tom, it looks like the board is letting you off the hook and I.
Thank you very much.
Well, don't go away because I think during the budget committee section, I'll have something for you.
Well, I'm staying right here, just going on mute.
All right, so that brings us to curriculum.
All right, um, so I just want to mention again, just the fabulous way that teachers have really, uh, pulled together to make sure that schools open, uh, and that students were able to begin learning again. I walked through the middle school and high school with Anne and I saw teachers talking about how they were working together to iron out some of the technological issues, like one teacher would pretend to be a student. Other teachers would be working, trying to figure out how to use the technology. So that level of collaboration was, has been amazing. Teachers have obviously been working flat out to make sure that learning could take place. And I just want to recognize that and celebrate that. The fifth grade team, again, just as Joe said, I, I was in there for a couple of hours, uh, Tuesday, and that learning was taking place. So it's just been an amazing, you know, opportunity again, to get to know the teachers, to see that level of dedication and the way that people are serving kids. Karen Thompson really deserves an award.
Yep.
The number of emails and phone calls she has been responding to has, has just, I would not want that job. But I'm so grateful that we have that support. So I just really wanted to highlight those things. We're working on having a, an instructional leadership PLC. We'll meet tomorrow, um, oh, sorry, on the 24th. That's my bad, September 24th. So that way, as a leadership team, we can get together and think about what, uh, what can we do to provide that instructional leadership to help support teachers and thinking about what that will look like. And beyond that, do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Carol? No?
My cares grant breakdown was helpful.
Oh, yeah, it was very helpful. Thank you very much because I know we've all been curious and. Thank you very much because I know we've all been curious on where that, where that dollar amount we're at.
The amounts are being tweaked now at this point, but it's, it's looking more like this is roughly where the numbers are going to be at. If you would like more of a breakdown at some point, just so we know.
For me, for me anywhere, that's fine. I mean, Holly might need a budget.
Yeah, maybe a budget time, but not right now, but this is a good start.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I put a big star next to it. Oh yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. I already put a big star next to it, so I pull it out, put in my budget stuff. Yeah. Thank you.
That way I can actually write the grants so we can get the money in. That would be.
Isn't that wonderful? That would be fantastic to have that, yes.
I don't, I don't think the budget committee understands that part of it, but that's okay right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure if I understand.
And I'm starting, I'm starting to get used to the whole idea of doing your budget without knowing how much money you're getting, um, just from having done this for a few years now.
It's always like, we'll see.
Right, exactly. Okay, so let's move on to technology. I will not skip Deb this, uh, this month inadvertently. So Deb, if you're with us, you're, you're up.
You have my report before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Deb? The only question that I had was, um, I didn't know if you could provide us any kind of clarification on the licensing issue that you ran into?
Yeah, um, these were the, some of the original wireless access points that we purchased and there are, can be three portions to the license, allows you to have different types of access. And apparently when we bought those original ones, we did not include these, there are three parts. We did not include two of the three parts. So we just had to, to get that all fixed, which we've done.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Um, Holly, do you have something?
No, I just wanted to say thank you and Justin and Shannon, because I know, you know, you guys have been, everyone's been out straight, but with the, with the tech piece, I know, I know you guys have been just bombarded.
Yeah, crazy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, uh, we're in the same boat as everybody. I have to say, you know, I, I think the teachers, uh, the, the teachers that I've worked with, um, there, there's a certain stress level there for sure. And so, and you know, I'm kind of high strung myself, but I try to go in and, and do the regulation thing and say, it's going to be okay. We're going to do this, it's day one, we're going to do it. Um, we'll make this work. Um, so yeah, I, I do appreciate that we have teachers who really have some wonderful technology skillsets and, um, that they're supporting one another because they're doing things that we just don't do in our department. It, we don't teach kids and we don't know what things look like from their perspective. So for them to be leaning on one another, it's been really awesome and it's helps us to keep moving forward with the things they need from us. So that, it's been very appreciated.
Awesome, does anyone have anything else for Deb?
October is better than December. The fingers crossed.
Right. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will move on to our principals. Um, Mrs. Free Tag, I believe you are up first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I have nothing to add to my report.
Unless you have a question.
Does anyone have any questions for Anne?
No, thank you for the, I do appreciate the summary, the breakout by grade of remote full access. I'm happy to see that 19.7 number. So, um, appreciate you putting that detail in there for us, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, that actually was very helpful, thank you.
Congrats on the new capture rocks.
Yes, we can put that into minutes. Uh, thank you to Mr. Kennedy from the board for working out that grant.
Yeah, he's, he's already started taking the classes and we'll see. He's been a lot of fun. And I, I will say, excuse me, sorry, one thing, uh, because you mentioned Marcia McCaffrey, um, you know, she's been with the Department of Ed for a long time. And in the, one of the first classes that they had, that this cohort that got the grant, um, she actually even mentioned to him that she was happy to see that he had applied and submitted for it because she remembered before, well, the instrumental program when it was around before, that she remembered that, that he was doing some outside of the box things with the music program and she was kind of hoping he would apply. So she was happy when she saw his name come across. So that, that felt really nice. Yep.
If nothing, if nobody has anything else for.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, so the student perspective one, I got two parent perspective. I didn't get a student perspective, was I supposed to?
And I had a student and not a parent.
Well, no, I mean in my packet. Yeah, so like Kylie didn't fill one out and I only filled out one of them.
All right, so I believe the student perspective is one they did in the advisory.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
If you ever like to have Tim Fleming come to a meeting via Zoom. I think he could explain a lot of what they're doing with Eric Mann and I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had just a quick question that I said, I appreciate it. This is on my, but kind of going back to what we, you touched on at the beginning when we asked for the overview of the opening of the school.
Yeah.
It sounds like things are a little rocky for remote. I feel very, very strongly, we do not want to get in the same situation we were in last spring when there were so many falling through the cracks, lack of accountability. You mentioned you're having another Zoom next week, so it will be a weekend at that point and there will be assignments being made. I don't know the best way whether now that you have your remote student list compiled and separated, there should be some communications that reiterate what the expectation is for remote learners. Just, you know, that is specifically directed to our remote learning community. I just am concerned, we all know things snowball, you know, since we're only two days in, but if then we have the meeting next Tuesday and then parents have, you know, then, then parents will go back to his questions Friday, now we're two weeks of the school, now my kid's behind, what do you mean they have to pass this stuff? I, I can't stress enough the importance of maintaining the directives that we set forward for our remote learners. And I think maybe some real targeted communication, um, might be a good idea.
How do you feel about that and would that help to support what you're doing?
I feel that we need more communication and you're right. So we have the, the next Zoom meeting is next week. Joe, Karen, Sean Robinson and I, we sit down, we plan it ahead of time so we, we know what our script is. But even so, for example, we said you can start coming to school September 1st, 2nd and 3rd to pick up your child's materials and their laptop. We had to call people on Thursday and say, why haven't you come in yet? Oh, we didn't know.
They can't over communicate.
That's right. So clearly saying it and putting it in print wasn't enough. We need a video showing people.
There you go, we'll make a video every weekend.
Yes. So if you're finding, um, like Julie was saying, if you're finding that you, you would like or could use some help, um, to reinforce some of the messaging around remote learning and their remote learning expectations.
Yes.
All right. If you would like to get some of the information to Julia, you know, so she can, and we can do that whole, you know, process, get that stuff out and help you.
All right.
To put that out into some other avenues. If we determine that, um, or I should say, if you determine that it's working and maybe needs to be picked up a notch and we do want to do something along, might as well put a video or something like that, we can do that to help support you.
Right.
In this case, what I would say is, um, share what your need is with us.
Yeah.
And then we can help support that.
And I think we'll know more about the need once teachers have some kind of baseline.
Yes.
Assessments done.
Yeah.
What I anticipate may happen is that I may need to hire a sub to say, come in for a day and cover so many teachers so they can have parent teacher conferences with their remote student during the school day. I don't want to give them more work, but I do want to enable them to communicate directly with parents. And I don't know how else to do that. I think it's a big challenge.
Yeah, I would agree. And I, that, and those kind of communications further down the line are, are critical too. I just think it is so super important right now, at the very beginning to reiterate, reiterate what the expectations are for our remote learners. Right, because I think then there's going to be a lot of backpedaling and it's going to be catching up and more frustration on the teacher's part. They're like, wait a minute, you told us that our classes all need to stay, you know, that the remote learners were expected to follow the same coursework and say, why am I now still teaching somebody what I was teaching everybody else in school two weeks ago because they haven't followed the protocol? That's not fair to staff. So I think a reminder email targeted to the remote learners, just a little bullets or however you want to present, it's better sooner rather than later because we're going to be putting more strain on our staff if we don't hold our feet to the mic on this.
So, so hold on one second. So let me ask a couple of questions here because I want to make sure that we're covering our base. All right, so Wayne, are you okay with Mrs. Free Tag and Julia communicating back and forth to develop a message?
Absolutely, and I agree.
Okay.
Something like this.
And Mrs. Free Tag, are you comfortable with having us, you know, help support your messaging and communicating with Julia?
Right, and I think, I think a timeline on that would be probably Monday. We need to get the message right out so they remember that Tuesday night, we're having the big Zoom and take notes. Bring your notebook with you so you don't forget these important dates and times.
All right, then you're willing and comfortable to help to generate that message? If you don't know at all.
Yeah.
Get that, Mr. Chair? So I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and it is cleared all the way down the line. You know, policies on your communication with, you know, staff and stuff like that. So I want to make sure that we're all good. All right, cool.
And in fact, I would, I would suggest that maybe if we could invite you to our little foursome when we start planning what's, what we're going to say Tuesday night, that wouldn't be a bad idea in my mind.
Okay.
If that's okay.
All right. I would say if you, if you two can communicate with that and we can go from there, you can use the process and help get the word out.
Okay.
Okay. And I think that's, I think that's actually a really good step in collaborating on this and making everyone feel more comfortable with our lanes and all that stuff we were talking about. Okay. Um, Kaylee, you had something?
Um, I was just wondering, are we still offering training for parents who are trying to navigate remote? I know we had discussed.
We have done this intensively yesterday over the phone. We had some parents, we probably took 60 phone calls yesterday morning and some of them, it was a parent who called back the third time, say, okay, I still need help with, okay, that worked, now help me with. So we did a lot of it and I have to commend, um, our office staff, they handled most of those phone calls and Mr. Feig, who actually did do, and I, I don't dare say it out loud.
You know, I think that's awesome. Why do we not want to say that out loud? I think supporting the.
She doesn't want to advertise it maybe is what she was trying to say.
So I mean, everybody went above and beyond yesterday, but I think a lot of people appreciated somebody on the phone, a person answers the phone and says, how can I help you? And they got the help they needed. So today we didn't have a lot of those phone calls, awesome. We took the phone. No, seriously, I think, I think the human connection is really important. Agreed.
Cool.
Yep.
So you were saying that, uh, about picking up the kids' stuff and some of them on Thursday, you called them and they didn't. So how did we communicate it? Was it like an all call, an email, like all the different ways they normally would get stuff?
All right, we, we put it in, uh, on that bulleted menu that went home in the big packet. We talked about it in the two prior Zoom meetings with parents. I posted it in the chat, they typed it in so they could see it in writing and not just hear it. And then we reminded people, I think there was some kind of, um, it was a tweet, she knows that stuff. So I think we, we tried all those venues, but maybe we should, like I'm saying, people, people look at pictures, they like the visual. Maybe we should have said, this is how you pick up your child's things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, but.
And then, and you were saying about reminding, you know, take notes during the Zoom calls. I've noticed, I mean, the Zoom meetings, I've noticed they're on the YouTube, this district's YouTube, so you, you'd always be like, go and wa- re-watch them if you need to, yeah.
Yes.
Cause I know I've re-watched bits of board meetings as I'm, you know, getting ready and making notes, it's like, whoa, what was that about? And I'll try to find it and watch it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cool. Anyone have anything else? All right, Mr. Bogio, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you have any questions, I can answer them. You have my report. It's been a very busy two weeks and a very busy two days.
Anyone have any questions for Joe? No, we were all, uh.
We're also going through the growing pains of the remote situation and it's just a matter of, uh, you know, until you actually do it, you know, like you, you try and simulate it all you want over the summer, but until you actually have it live and in action, it's, um, it's just not the same thing. So, and everybody's just been, you know, great about it. I have to catch myself though, because I, I tend to kind of barge into classrooms and I've been barging into classrooms and seeing people on the video screen and saying, oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt whatever you were doing there. It's, it's unusual to have that interaction that I'm just not used to it.
I do want to say one thing, so I noticed on Facebook yesterday, right? Yeah, God, it doesn't feel like yesterday was the first day. It just, but yesterday, a lot of like first day pictures of little kids and almost all of them, they posed with their masks on. And I know a big concern everywhere was, oh, the little kids wearing masks. And from those pictures and from a few things I heard, the little kids, it sounds like generally will just be pretty compliant about it. So, and they're just adorable. Just adorable in their little masks, but yeah.
Yeah, they, they have been really good. You know, you know, we've had some kids who've had difficulty with it too, and we're just trying to explain to them and, in developmentally appropriate ways, you know, here's why we do these things right now. If we do them now, we may not have to do them all year, so.
Yeah.
Keep your mask on.
Anybody, anything? No? All right, thank you, Joe. All right, Superintendent's report.
So you have my report, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to build a little on Holly's comment. In the last two mornings, I was able to be out at the elementary school as the students were getting out of the cars and out of the buses. And I have to say, it was one of the most satisfying things I've done for many months. The students, even though they had masks, it was like Halloween to them. I mean, it was, they looked at it a little bit like a costume, but they were smiling ear to ear. And when they would see a parent or a teacher they'd recognize, you know, mutual kind of love that, you know, was kind of exchanged, the visual non-verbally, it was just so precious. And I was a little bit surprised, but I guess I shouldn't have been, because typically when parents drop off students, you know, elementary students, opening days, I've been doing this for a long time, there's, there's more tears and there's the kind of angst. And in this case, I saw more smiles from parents since they.
Did they go to a complete proud?
But it was obviously that the parents were very happy to be handing these students off to our care for the day and with our promise of a great educational experience. So that was so moving, you know, I came back from both those days, uh, just really happy that I'm still in education because of the, the value of that experience would be hardly replicated.
Oh, good.
Does anybody have any questions for Wayne?
Well, I just want to say, I'm glad you had that experience because I know the last like couple of months have been hard on everybody. So it's great to have that. To hear you say you're happy to still be here, all of you.
And even the bumps, like seeing the difference between drop off the first day and the second day was night and day. So I think that really kind of reinforced the parents that yes, there will be bumps, but look how quickly you recover. So that I think was really good to see. I was very impressed with it.
If I could, Ed, Sean.
Absolutely, yes.
I meant to thank the, the staff, both buildings, a tremendous commitment to making this work, the organization around the, the drop offs. I mean, Joe, it's military precision at the elementary and I didn't get out in time to see the, the middle high, but I was so impressed with the way that all worked. The end of day is always complicated, the first day, because students are handed off to a recognized guardian, uh, but even that. But even that went better than expected. And I don't know, the first day, I didn't get there today, but my assumption is that that's being improved as well. So it went better than expected.
Awesome.
Oh, I did have one. I, I was looking at my other notes, not known on my agenda. So I, I put this under Wayne's report to ask, but it could be for anybody. Um, hold on one second. Let me get back to my notes. So it's been, you know, in the news, we're seeing different schools who have, have had in the last couple of days, staff members or, I don't think as much students. I think maybe Windham had students that have tested positive, but that's a different situation. But, so I know over the summer, like in the middle of August, there was a school in WSESU that had a staff member who had been in the building and people were in and out of the building. So it wasn't like even, you know, everyone back yet. And they had been quarantining because they were exposed to somebody who was positive outside of school. And a call went out to all parents of this elementary school, even though kids weren't there, just to let them know. And Raymond School District just had in the paper, grades four and five starting remotely because several staff members, I think it was six or something, were exposed, excuse me, were exposed to a positive, someone who tested positive, an event outside of school. So how would we handle that if, like, if you're, if somebody is exposed outside of school and are quarantining? Like, the staff member is quarantining, how, what's the notification on that? Because that didn't really fall into anything the state did. And like I said, especially the WSESU had a staff member who was quarantining when just a handful of people were in the building. And they let every, cuz one of my friends is a parent at this school, and they let all the parents know, even though there are no kids in the school, so.
So I haven't officially dealt with that protocol, but Anne has been working with the nurses. So my guess is, they've had that conversation. We're gonna have it as an eighteen on the twenty-third. So Anne, I don't know if you can add anything to that clarification. I know it's state guidance.
They would go back to the state's association and go by their own. So we notify the HHS and they would tell us what we needed to do.
Okay, so the person would quarantine at home because they've been exposed, they're waiting for tests. The person would, would quarantine, obviously. And then you would reach out to the state to see what we had to do for notifications. Okay. Okay, it's just different places have handled it a little differently, so that's why I just wanted to see like what was ours.
Well, we've talked about it a number of times since we decided that we would go with what the department has helped to procure and to tell them.
Okay.
Which I think is what we all agreed a little while ago was what we needed to do.
Right, because as I, as I understand it, they, they've got their protocols. It's pretty regimented. And, and it's, it's literally, once you tell them there's an issue, it's, okay, here's step one, step two, step three. And this is how we do it.
They do contact you.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, no, but I- Yeah, I don't think you're understanding though. My question wasn't that somebody in our building tested positive. It's they are getting a test and quarantining because they were notified that they were exposed, like, to somebody who was positive. So it's not like, oh, we have a staff member who's positive, cuz that isn't the paperwork we got. It's that they are waiting the results of a test cuz they were at a dinner or at whatever with a family member, you know what I mean? Who is positive. So, and that just wasn't spelled out in any of the stuff I don't believe that we got. So that's why I was asking.
So there's like an extra degree of separation?
Yeah, and different school districts are handling it differently.
I've talked to Jan Zellner, I just a little bit about this, and she was very adamant that you talk to the person's doctor. When did it happen? Who have they been in contact with? That timeline, as well as who you've been around? So I think it's really contextual. I think every case might be a little bit different.
Yeah.
You know, if I, if I was gone two weeks and hadn't been back in the school yet, but contacted somebody and was quarantined, it'd be very different than if I'd been in school for two weeks and last night I went out and here I am today.
Yeah, and it has something to do with how many, how many, like, so much time before symptoms showed up and this and that. Yeah, there's like a whole bunch of different, yeah.
So I do think we have to talk to medical and the HHS. You know, every kind of situation's gonna be odd.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions for Wayne? No? Alright, let's go on to board committees. Alright, so personnel. We haven't really done anything there as far as negotiations. We've had the meetings as far as like reopening.
Yeah.
Wayne, did you wanna say anything?
Well, I, we have been contacted by parent leadership.
And intensive.
Trying to put together, and my hope is on Monday to begin to coordinate some early meetings and, you know, make it work with the board member's schedule. So, and we do have some time, but the earlier the better on this sort of thing, especially in a budget planning year. You know, obviously, there's a contract that sits separately. It's very important that we have that consideration as we build budgets. So we haven't started it yet. However, we have been meeting with the parents, Holly and I, meeting with the leadership over the summer. So we, we kind of know some of the conversations that we'll restart with. So I think we're in better, better shape than we might be if we just are getting together the first time.
Yeah, I agree. Cuz we normally would not have had conversations about anything up until this point. So yeah, so I do agree with that.
That's true. Alright, did you wanna add anything?
No. I don't think so, no.
No, alright. Health and wellness.
There hasn't really been any yet on that, so.
Alrighty. Very good. Town budget.
Alright, so we're just getting started. We, our next meeting is the seventeenth, so next week. And Tom, just one thing, Jill has already given them the town budget timeline. So I think they expect that, they expect that from us, kind of like our timeline of things. So I don't know if you and I wanna chat and kind of come up with something, you know, tentative for them.
Sounds good. I haven't had a chance to go to the DRA site and find the DRA timeline, which we used to build off our own. But I, I did give you some general framework of timeline information. We can flesh that out.
And I'll email you just so you can see it, the timeline that Jill sent them from the town, just so you can kind of look at that.
Okay.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Alright, staff development.
We have not, when is the next meeting? I have not gotten there yet. Okay, I was gonna say, I don't have one and I feel like that might, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing him.
What's challenging is the fact that, to my knowledge at least, most of the professional development has already occurred. I mean, there might be a couple of days. Mr. Woolridge might have more of a sense of that than I do at this point. So there might be a couple more professional development days. But those, to my knowledge, have not been mapped out on the calendar. So then it makes, it makes, you know, having a meeting a little bit
Right.
more challenging because we don't know when PV will occur next.
And our miss, well, our parents have probably got, the ones who are here in the spring at least have all the PV meetings.
Yeah, they're good.
If we have any new parents, then, you know, we have a little bit.
Patty Wallace could offer some professional development, the two days prior to school opening, Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay, so nothing for that?
Alright. Y'all say, Kayla?
Mm-hmm.
Let's just, legislation, NHSBA.
Yeah, I have some things. So first off, there's a note in the packet about the annual meeting for NHSBA. I'm willing to attend that. Right now, it is scheduled to be onsite in a Triangle Park offices. So if anybody else wants to join, it's free.
I'll, I'll do it.
Chance would be, yeah, you'll be there anyway.
Oh, my God, you're right. I have to.
So, but-
Jim and I always have such a good time.
So I'm willing to do that again. I asked Anne to include the legislative bulletin at the end of our packets. I'm sure she probably saw that. So a couple of things in there that I thought were interesting was the Senate Bill 563. And that bill amends current law by lowering the requirement of passing a bond or note from two-thirds to three-fifths. So in the future, if the district is counting, you know, votes on a, on a proposed bond or note, that might lower the threshold of passing. Or it would do that. And then Senate Bill 584 is about brain injury association in Hampshire. The state will develop a concussion and brain injury return to learning policy and plans to school districts. So that I thought was also important. And there was an email from an NHSBA, which was a link to the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project, which is a petition that's related to the Congress lawsuit. So I thought that is an important thing for a board to individually look at. Really anybody who lives in New Hampshire should look at that. And I don't think there'll be a tighter conference this year either.
I saw that there will be. It's the New Hampshire, I don't know if it's school administrators are putting it on. And I went to their website like a couple of days ago and it's onsite, but I just, for some reason, couldn't figure out navigating around exactly. And I didn't put a lot of time in, but like where it's at. But NHSBA is not like doing it. They were just passing on these. Yeah.
So I probably won't be doing anything with that this year.
Yeah.
Alright, facilities. Oh, wait, I skipped a whole bunch.
Yeah, where's facilities? Whoa.
I'm sorry, I made a note on selectmen and I thought that that was done, I thought it was checked. So legislative, so back up, number six, emergency management. Anything from anybody? I don't think it's done anything. Alright, how about Wyndham Career Center? Have they done anything? No? Alright, so HASP and Kayla, you gonna report on it, HASP?
Yeah.
See, I was skipping ahead.
I know, wow, Sean.
Sorry.
Alright, so I'm going to probably need help from other people who are there to make sure I am explaining this correctly. So, so correct me if I'm wrong, HASP money that we're currently getting can be used to support a hybrid type learning model, which we're not doing. But because of kindergarten being set up the way it is, we could potentially support kindergarten. Looking into logistics, obviously, and staffing and all of that. But it's something I think Mary Ann wants to explore. And also the middle school remote homework help. So that's after school, I believe, in the homework program. Is that correct? Okay. And the before-school program for middle school will start, she's hoping, second quarter. Trying to get into the swing of things first quarter. And the numbers will be different at the elementary school than they have typically been. And I think that was pretty much, those were the big highlights.
Yeah, the state is being a lot more lenient with what Mary Ann can do just because of, you know, all the changes we have. So if there's something that she has, this is a part of her program that she's modified. She can still use the grant funds, even if it's not written that way in the grant. She just needs to say, this is why we're doing this. And they're a lot more lenient with that.
Yeah.
And they pushed the meeting schedule out cuz now we only need to meet four times a year. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna be meeting every single month with them.
So we can probably remove this from the monthly report, maybe?
Yeah, let's figure out how to do that cuz we probably want that quarterly, but I don't know how difficult that will be to pop in and out.
You could just skip it.
We could just keep it.
If you haven't been to a meeting.
Let's keep it because we already skip over emergency management and the career center. So keep it, then we'll just skip over.
And then it's not a complete, but it's great.
To put back in.
Yeah. It is, yeah.
Well, any of the reports, right? Yeah.
And she was due for the Sipas visit this year, but they're putting that off to like 2022, but they may still get the state visit. So, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you said the middle school before-school program is gonna start the second quarter? Or does the elementary school have a before-school program right now?
They will have the AM and PM and registration will begin Monday. It'll start the twenty-first. And it starts the twenty-first.
I've just seen that a lot on Facebook. People like, what's going on with HASP? What do we know? Yeah.
That might be a good thing to put out.
Yeah, actually. Alright, cool. Thank you.
Any questions on HASP? Alright, so selectmen. Alright, so Jay Khan visited the Select Board a few weeks back and gave some updates. He actually gave some updates on some of the legislation Jim had mentioned. So, so he was there talking about some stuff. We've been hearing a lot more from the, the new chief of police. He's been there, you know, quite often at their meetings, giving updates. So he's really kind of taking the community to heart and really, you know, getting out there. And some of the stuff he's gonna be doing is, is really great. And then, of course, now everyone's starting to get ready for budget, so that's a hot topic. I've been asked a few questions here and there, but it's like, I'm a budget rep and don't ask me. Cuz I haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, don't know yet.
Well, some things, you know, I have an idea, but I don't, not getting into any detail whatsoever because we don't really have that. So, and I would normally, normally ask if our selectman rep had anything to say, but is Megan on at all?
Doesn't look like it.
Alright, so we don't have a selectman rep here. So that's basically the selectmen stuff. Anyone have any questions on them? Now, facilities. I've been so looking forward to it.
So, facilities, we did have our August meeting. I think it's the first one since winter. Both Wayne and Joe added notes from the meeting in their summaries. I should note that the two storage units were purchased, or not purchased, but redid for HES and that did help with the spacing issues over there, I think. Sean gave us a list of some more minor improvements that he's done since he's been on. It was good to see that we had an atomized list of all these, these proactive things. And then he also discussed the possibility of doing something with Johnson Controls. As people who have attended the facility meeting know, Johnson Controls is a repeat topic a lot.
Yes.
So potentially this year, we may see some suggestions on the controls for the districts. And I should also note that Julia will be vice chair, Joe will be secretary and I'll be chair.
Right? So can I just, you know, throw in there, it's not really a question so much, but I have had nothing but compliments for our new facilities director. I, I just have had so many people say the buildings are, you know, the buildings are clean, the air quality is fantastic. The equipment doesn't make the noise and it made rooms so much more easy to control individual temperatures. I have had nothing but compliments. So I would like to basically put that in the minutes and if the facilities committee can pass that along, you know, at least my personal thanks. I think that he's doing a fantastic job.
And I second that. I have heard same thing, you know, yep.
That might be good to have available for the budget discussion stuff.
Absolutely, cuz I think, you know, now that the equipment is being run, you know, properly, we're gonna definitely. I would be shocked if we did not see a cost savings there.
Yeah.
I think we're definitely gonna see a savings in, in the efficiency of the building running properly, of buildings.
And, and he's, one other thing, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to let the budget committee know too. It's one of my talking points is that he's able to troubleshoot and fix issues at a much earlier stage than, than prior, so.
And he doesn't have to call in the people who charge us a lot of money.
Yeah.
Right, right. Did anyone have anything else for Jim or Julia? All right, um, so community connections. Oh, weird to go with that.
You guys haven't been busy at all.
That's actually, for the most part, been doing okay. We've been able to, you know, put information out there, you know, that we get from the principals or that we get from Wayne. We put the videos out there. Those are pretty well received. So I think that messaging is working pretty well. It's, it's pretty tightly controlled at this point. You know, people need approval, obviously to enter the group. They need approval to have a post up there so we can see that beforehand. There's been several times that I have not approved the post and then contacted someone with the answer, you know, independently just because the post wasn't, it, it wasn't what we really need out there. But people still needed an answer, so, you know, got them that answer. And, and a lot of times the answer has been, you know, call the school, you know, because Kayla and I are not going to guess. You know, that's what we're going to put out misinformation if we can at all avoid it. So a lot of it has been, you know, you know, call the elementary school, call the middle high school. Um, you know, we don't know that answer. We have, um, now taken, we did have one, and it's only one, one, uh, person that, well, it wasn't bad comments. It wasn't appropriate really for most part. So what we did was we are now turning off the commenting, writing and post. So it's pretty much a unidirectional, um, line of communication there for the most part. And, you know, since then, um, and it wasn't bad before that because we were getting some decent feedback. But sometimes it only takes the one, as we, as we discussed in the beginning.
So they can't ask questions on that page?
No, no. What they can do is they can ask a question as like a post that we then have to approve. And if it's a question that, yeah, you know, that's really helpful for other people to know, I'll approve it, answer the question, turn the commenting off. So I know social media is a lot of back and forth and we're taking away some of that back and forth. But I think it's appropriate to do that in this case because we're really trying to put the information out there and we're really trying to vet the information that's going on for the page. So it's not like anyone can just come in and post something that's just not accurate or not. You know what I mean? Because that's all you need is one of those to really make it go sideways. And so we, Kayla and I worked really hard, I think, to avoid that.
And if there is a time where, like before, when we wanted input, then we have commenting turned on.
Yes.
And it can always be turned off at any time. But I think, then we also know to be more vigilant. And if I get a notification, I'm immediately checking. So I think, you know, it's individualized, but for the most part, it's just been nice to get the info out there and not have to worry about what's coming in.
And Kayla has a rea- a lot of really good filters on that right now. Because we'll get notifications for a question that comes in that includes the word why. I mean, why is a pretty benign word for the most part, but we'll get a notification. You have someone saying why. And, okay, so that's either a legitimate question that we can answer or if it's something snarky, which we really haven't had.
No.
You know, it's like, well, you know, no. But, um, so, so Kayla's got a lot of really good filters on there.
Yeah, it was set up to be a means of communication. Now that you all know, I expressed concern initially about social media and the pushback and the comments and how it can go sideways so quickly. So I think using it as a means of communication is great, appreciative.
And I think we really took what, you know, you and I think Jim had some concerns too and Holly. I think we took what you guys, you know, said to heart. And I think that we've really kind of, um, created a tight ship there.
Yeah, I know, it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you were able to find a way to make it that it's more of a one direction.
Yeah.
And information, pushing out information more than a debate. For, format. Because, because I wasn't sure how you could do that. I never even, I'm not involved with groups, so I don't know about turning it off. But that's, that's great because I like the idea of just put the ad out there, you know?
And people can still message us, you know? I get people messaging me, I'm sure you have people messaging you. And, uh, we, you know, frequently put out the, you know, questions, comments, concerns with the community connections, uh, email. That's been used a couple of times, but most of the time, I mean, they're, I think they're messaging us, you know, privately. But, uh, and that's all fine too, because, you know, that's, uh, something we can address.
Right.
So, yeah, so if anybody has any questions? All righty. Um, so behavioral support team.
I don't think we need this organized to put on here. I think they're just left over.
Well, I think you're right because we are kind of already.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
We were gonna do the implementation.
Yeah, the implementation. We, we were going to do implementation for behavior. And I know Eric Mann's met with people. Have you not been involved in that? Oh, over the summer he met with people.
So what, what we've had, uh, is we've had that work being done at the building levels. We have a steering committee or what we formally call the behavioral support team that needs to meet with reps from these two groups prior to budgeting. So I'm thinking October. So this is one we will want to keep on.
Okay, all right.
Yep, and we'll, that'll be the conversation. I think the overarching, um, mission of this group is to coordinate the efforts that are now at the building level and working with Eric Mann. We only have Eric Mann for this current year. So how we move forward, I think, is we need to articulate and coordinate all of that.
And you said we'd be keeping on, uh, keeping on tuition implementation as well?
See, should we, in light of COVID, like say if COVID never happened, we'd be moving forward with that. But I don't know, in light of COVID, maybe we shelve it for the year. I mean, I know, I mean, and this is no reason here, but the makeup of the committee, two of the staff members are no longer with us, I mean, with the district. They're with us. That doesn't sound good. They're no longer with the district. And then, um, so it's just me and Wayne, one staff member. And I don't know if the community member was going to still do it. So it, we would kind of have to restructure it again anyway.
I would think the community would not want us actively recruiting people from outside.
Right now.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, right now.
So the budget committee may want to have an update. They may still want to keep it.
Yeah.
A long-term type thing.
So we can update if it not have it, you know, because we can, I mean, I, I, I agree with kind of redo, you know, do it when things get back to normal, when normal-ish. But I mean, you're right, they probably still want to know, what are you doing with that?
Because that was a blocking point.
Right. And I guess the answer to what are you doing with that would be, well, given the fact that we're in a pandemic.
All of this. We're in a pandemic, yeah.
So do we want to take this off for a little bit?
I'm okay with that, yeah. I'm fine with that.
Anna, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Wayne, are you okay with this, John, too?
Yeah, I, I, all of the conversation makes sense to me. I think right now we don't want to encourage recruits.
We don't want to pull people in front.
But ultimately, the revenue, additional revenue, which with lower tax rate is still on.
Yeah, we still want to do that.
Well, and like I think I pointed out the last meeting, there's some towns in Vermont that have second homes for Connecticut and New York people have second homes there. And they're enrolling their children in school in Vermont and it's causing some real issues with numbers and people. So there may be, if, if we were to say our gates are open, we might get, because of our local COVID and because of general safety of this area, we may be getting some attention right now.
Yeah, we're not ready for that.
It's not ready.
Yeah.
We're not too, we don't, you know, want an influx.
Yeah.
Right. All right, very good. Um, so joint loss committee?
We are meeting 9:24, I think, 9:24.
9:24, all right. So then we're up to citizen comments. All right, citizen comments. Yeah, you want to go around?
Sorry, I have to wait. Sean Robinson, do you have anything? I think that was no. Tom O'Connor, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Donna, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Erica, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm not sure who iPhone is. Debbie's all set. Teresa, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Everybody, all right, um.
This citizen would like to comment on the fact that it's sub zero in here.
Sub zero?
I think it's because it's coming out of here.
Oh, I'm actually.
I'm freezing too, Julia.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'll try to generate more heat.
I'll write my Parker next week.
All right, so, uh, we are looking for a motion to go to non-public.